I'll let you talk about it. All right, move her from the center chair. We have all the notations. Okay, that's good. Am I ready?
Yeah, I gotta go with that. Give him up.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we're a few minutes tardy tonight. We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council at 6:35 PM on today, July 28th. Please stand for first, a moment of silence, then followed by the invocation tonight, and then we'll remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Thanks for who you are. I pray that you would watch over this meeting and be with us, give us wisdom. God, I pray that you would bless our community, our businesses, our schools, and the houses that we represent as well. And I pray you would give us wisdom as we navigate through these waters in these next few weeks. We love you, Jesus. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk Treasurer, could you take the roll call, please?
Yes, I do. Councilman Span?
Present.
Councilman Hardaway?
Here.
Councilman Minchuck?
Here.
Councilwoman Yuzelak?
Present.
Councilwoman Pettit?
Here.
Councilman White? Mr. White, are you here? Vice President White?
Yes.
President Bella?
I'm here. I thought Mr. White was watering the flowers out front.
Okay. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations.
We have a special presentation. I'll call on Councilman Sean Pettit and also call on retired Deputy Chief Jim Donahue to approach the front for a special presentation. Don't look so nervous, Jim. It's okay.
It's okay. You're fine, Jim. Presented to Assistant Chief Jim Donahue, entrusted with the honor of the force, you served honestly, faithfully, and valually. You navigated the path of duty for the town of Maryville and its residents. Through wisdom is good, and the wisdom is good at the beginning, it is better at the end. Congratulations on your retirement, 1982 through 2020. Congratulations. It does fit in here, because I took it out the last time, so if you could hold that up, because I really want to get a picture. Yes, it's taken a picture.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Jim, if you would stay there for a second. Chief Cuttino has something for you also. Chief?
Chief Donahue, we have the honor of the town, of the state, of the republic. Well, I would like to thank you for your service, chief. Very dominating, appreciate it. Support myself, and I'm sure that I'm sitting chief. All right.
And Jim, if you want to hand your items to your wife there, please stay. And I'll call on Indiana State Representative Lisa Beck, who also has a presentation for Jim Donahue.
Just one more. I just want to say that I'm really honored.
Lisa? Sean doesn't need a mic, but...
I'm really honored to be here. You know, we were here, I don't know, I guess you had your school board meeting that was really important, incredibly important for the community, so I appreciate that you're... Oh, do you? Do you have any hustle out, right? Okay, so, and I want to tell you that because Representative Mike Ellsworth also signed this, and so did Dr. Vernon Smith, who's also, we share part of Maryville. So, this is on behalf of all three of us. This is, we're honoring Captain James Donahue for his record of public service with the Maryville Police Department. Captain James Donahue, badge number 85, began his career with the Maryville Police Department on January 9th of 1983. Among his many distinguished accomplishments was that he was commended in July of 1984 for having single-handedly disarmed and apprehended a homicide suspect. Captain Donahue led the department in OWI arrests from 1983 to 1996, whereas Captain Donahue was the Officer of the Year in 1993 and in 2005. He is a graduate of the Northwestern University Staff and Command School, having earned a 4.0 GPA, and received the Cremo Leadership Award, which is awarded to the student who best displays the dedication, devotion, ethics, sense of justice, and other professional values that exemplify the kind of leadership needed in today's law enforcement community. Captain Donahue is an Indiana Law Enforcement Academy Certified Master Instructor and also a Certified Voice Stress Operator. The master level instructor is the highest level of instructor certification offered by the Law Enforcement Training Board. Among his numerous duties within the Maryville Police Department, Captain Donahue served as the IT manager for the police department and other offices located within the Maryville Town Hall. Captain Donahue was appointed as the second in charge of the Maryville Police Department in June of 2007, having spent his storied career rising through the ranks as a patrolman, a corporal, sergeant, a lieutenant, and eventually became the only member of the department to earn the rank of captain. He has served as patrol commander, operations commander, and ultimately as the Assistant Chief of Police. Upon appointment as interim chief in 2010, Captain Donahue said, you quoted the newspaper, that he would continue to look out for the best interests of the town's residents and police officers while he served as Maryville's interim chief. And Jim always loved and cared for the Maryville Police Department. He was always there if he needed him. That's according to Reverend Randy Scott, our chaplain for the Maryville Police Department. And Jim is devoted to his wife Denise, and they will soon celebrate 40 years of marriage. They have two children, Ryan and Stephanie. Jim has also served the Maryville School Corporation as a school board member. Jim has blessed this community, his school district, his church, and his family. In each sphere, he has served faithfully and conscientiously. The Bible tells us to give honor to whom honor is due. Jim Donahue deserves such honor. And that's from his pastor, Steve DeWitt, from the Bethel Church in Crown Point. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives at the 121st General Assembly of the State of Indiana that the Indiana House of Representatives honors Captain Jim Donahue for his 38 years of service to the Maryville residents and his fellow officers. Thank you. I do want to say one thing. I could have, we could have filled five sheets with all of your accomplishments. And I wanted to say, I had a conversation at Nylea the other day, and he said, "He's a scratch golfer. Don't ever golf with him." So, I guess you won the Indiana FOP for the state. He won several times, so, anyway.
Thank you very much. This is very unexpected. I knew there was going to be something special, but I didn't expect this coming from you. I really appreciate your care and concern. I've seen it for the students and for the residents of Maryville. I appreciate it. I appreciate you being here tonight. A big deal, and much appreciated. Thank you. I thank the town, Town Council, and my coworkers as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Before we let Jim go off to his school board meeting, we'd be remiss not to mention that this year, the Northwest Indiana Police didn't get to celebrate with an annual award banquet this year because of the coronavirus pandemic. But their acts of bravery and service didn't go unnoticed. The Indiana District One Law Enforcement Council has been traveling to individual departments to present offers with awards for life-saving, exemplary service, and lifetime achievement. I'd like to announce tonight that Maryville's own Police Chief, Deputy Police Chief James Donahue, Retired Police Chief Jill Petrush, and Lieutenant Robert Morgan have all been awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Northwest Indiana Police. Jimmy, you've always gone above and beyond. I've known you for decades, and I appreciate your service. Even in leaving, you're still going to serve the town in some capacity, helping us with IT issues, and I just can't thank you enough for your years of service. It's been an honor just to know you and work with you. Okay? You got it?
Rick?
Issue?
Yes, sir.
Black academic.
Oh, please. Down.
Hello, my name's Councilman Don Span. My first three days in 96, when I moved to Maryville, I came from Inland Steel out climbing to 61st. Every day I came down that hill, I got a ticket from Jim Donahue. And I'm in a police station crying, "Oh, this bad guy. This guy's just giving me tickets to the white box, boy." And they're saying, "Oh, that's Jim Donahue. He spends half the day there, Don." I found a new route to come down there. I haven't had a ticket since 1960, 1996. Thank you, Jim.
Some of the memories aren't fond of you, but, you know, the good, the bad.
Hey, did you pay him? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you, Representative Beck, for your words.
Did you pay him?
Anything else? Moving on. We have a letter from the Town Engineering Administrator endorsing Core Construction's recommendation to approve payment for application number seven to various vendors for work completed at the Maryville Community Center. Mr. King?
Yes, President Bella. The town's professional staff, myself, have reviewed the June 2020 billing for work completed at the new Maryville Community Center. We do concur with Core Construction's recommendation in approving payment for application number seven to the vendors listed below on the letter here, in the amount of $1,348,255.37.
I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Yuzelak, to approve the claims of $1.3 million for Core Construction, various vendors. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Steve. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher for approval for July 28th, 2020, and approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of July 14th.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzelak?
Second.
Mr. President.
Sorry, second.
Second by Mr. Minchuck. And Madam Clerk Treasurer, comments?
President Bella, I'd like to make some change. There's some corrections that need to be made in the Town Council minutes, if I could.
Sure.
And then I have the corrected version for you guys to sign. If I may. On the first page, on paragraph, fifth paragraph where it starts, President Bella stated that Police Chief, it should say Police Chief Cuttino presented the chief with a gold retirement badge. I believe the minutes in your packet says Officer Lido and not Police Chief Cuttino. So, that's corrected. On page two, under the consent agenda, after by Councilwoman Yuzelak, it should say seconded by Councilman Pettit. And I believe the version you guys have don't say that. It just says by Councilman Pettit. And then on the last page, under the BZA actions, what should have been added was Voice Vote 7-0, motion carries, under Alfred Martin, and Petition Alfred Martin, I'm sorry, and under Petition John Melendez, also should be added Voice Vote 7-0, motion carries. And on the very last page, under adjournment, Councilwoman Yuzelak made a motion, what it should say, I'm sorry, the correction is Councilwoman Yuzelak made a motion, all members said aye, meeting adjourned. The correct minutes will be set around to be signed.
Thank you. Mrs. Yuzelak, would your motion then approve the corrections that Madam Clerk Treasurer just presented to us?
So moved.
Mr. Minchuck, your second hold.
Do we know it, sir?
Very good.
Mr. President, I did have some questions.
Your wife?
In terms of looking at the consent agreement, I'm sorry, consent agenda, I was looking at the accounts, and I just had some questions on the accounts, the vouchers, specifically with Barnes and Thurnberg. I don't, it doesn't have a date in there, so I'm wondering what time that represents.
That's for Kelly.
Let's see. The Barnes and Thurnberg account, I'm looking now. Okay. Vice President White, I'd be happy to pull the invoice for you. I don't have it with me. That is probably, I would be willing to surmise that this is probably an old bill from the work that they did actually when they were deciding about selling the, our building and making some changes to how we were going to finance the project at the community center. So, that's probably what this invoice is from. I don't have the invoice with me, though.
Okay.
But I can, I can get it to you.
Okay. Additionally, I was looking at with the Lake County Treasurer. I was trying to figure out why we are paying the Lake County Treasurer to give us the stormwater, I guess the money from the stormwater property tax bills, Conservancy District, and it's a couple Conservancy Districts. I'm just thinking in terms of when we have a treasurer, a Lake County Treasurer, I didn't know we gave them a contract to take those dollars and send them to us. I thought that was something that probably should happen anyway.
Mr. President, then maybe...
Mr. Pettit.
Madam Clerk Treasurer can answer that. I believe, Leonard, that that is probably because we have the stormwater added to the tax bill, out of the field, just for all the parcels in the town. So, they may be charging us to import that data in all of the town's parcel key numbers. Matt, would that sound?
I'm aware that they are charging. We have been notified of that, because I have charged in a community that I know of. So, we could have Carl Sander look into that.
Yeah, because it says stormwater contractual services for $3,800 bucks.
You had one job, Steve.
I'm trying, President.
Can you hear me? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any charges from the county, so we'll have to just look into that, and we'll ask Carl Sander about that. Because we compile all the parcel data, and then we send it to them in a specific plan to their data department so they can add it to the tax bill. But again, as long as I've been doing this and adding stuff to the tax bills, they have never charged any community that I know of, so we'll look into that.
No, it just says on the claims here, stormwater slash contractual service for $3,802. And I was just wondering, in a sense of it being the Lake County Treasurer, why are we paying for it?
You know, that's actually a very good question, and I'm not sure. I don't know that...
It's a couple of them here, Madam.
I'm not sure, you know, and I see those. It looks like stormwater, Conservancy, Little River, and property tax bills.
There, we receive about 31 delinquent property taxes of parcels that we own. What we did is we filed, removed the taxes from those parcels. But what they cannot waive, they cannot waive these fees such as the stormwater and Conservancy District fees. I know you charge stormwater fee, and even the town case, it's own stormwater. So, in essence, at the end of the day, we can have the taxes removed from the parcels, but we're going to try to zero those out. I'm working with the county right now. But in terms of these specialized fees which are allocated under statute, these are not waived. So, I was in conversation with Carl Sander. I instructed him to go ahead and just waive these and actually zero them out so that we can start everything from zero after. So, this was, this was something I've been working on with Carl Sander, and just try to get the proper effects of these 21 parcels.
I appreciate that. Even with the Little River, the Little County River Basin tags, I'm just saying, all those things just kind of flagged me a little bit as to why we're paying the Treasurer Department or the Lake County Treasurer.
Well, we're paying the Treasurer's Department because they collect the fees.
But why are we paying them? Because they're government entities, and...
But these, but these fees are allocated by statute, and you cannot, I have no mechanism to waive these fees. So, at the end of the day, we have to waive these fees because they're delinquent on these parcels. I didn't know what these parcels were going up for tax now, because they're, the delinquent fees are what are paid. So, what we're working with is Lake County Treasurer's office and the Commissioner's office, get all the property taxes waived for these 21 parcels. So, we have the ability to do that, and those taxes removed, waived. In essence, at the end of the day, specialized fees such as Conservancy District, Little Cal, stormwater, are feasible. I have, I have no ability to have waived by the County Commissioners.
Okay.
These fees create understanding.
I just don't understand the process. I just look at things.
Well, and again, the...
That's like, to me, that's just like the police department charging us to...
Simple. I understand, but even our local, we charge stormwater, we have the ability to...
Speaking of that...
That's something that's not applicable. So, in essence, if that applies to our own town, then I think that it would apply to the county, why, fees aren't applicable.
Okay, no more questions on that. Thank you.
Well, let's try and get some more clarity, though, on it. Let's not leave it lay there, okay? So, maybe, Kelly, can you get some details for the council on it?
Sure, I'll talk to Sander and Sander about, exactly, well, at least the property tax bill fee that's still on here. But I didn't realize what this was, but I do concur legally with what our attorney just said, because those fees are statutory fees, so if we own the parcels, we have to pay, we have to pay the fees.
Thank you. Mr. White, okay to leave those claims on the list for now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to standing committees tonight, we have Budget and Finance. Mr. White.
Mr. President, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the budget and financing process, talk to Marge a little bit about it. We want to really basically know where we at in the budgeting process, because we'll have to review that sometimes, where I was wondering when we may be able to get the documentation. I know you guys are doing some things right now in the terms of trying to put budgets departments, for each department. So, that's something that Finance Committee is going to have to go over. So, that's what...
Mr. Riordan, do you want to kind of answer the question where we are today? I think we're just waiting for one department, right?
That's correct. Councilman, we reached out to the, as well as the Treasurer's Office and their court, received budgets. First budget was 2020, what you can give back, so to speak, to the town that was referenced earlier. The second is what your 2021 budget might look like. We have that information from everyone except one entity. We expect that soon. We will then, even with Sander and company, our intention then is to present that in summary form to the council, beginning with the Finance Committee, and ultimately to the council through the Finance Committee, make recommendations on the 2021 budget. And we are, we have been engaged in that process for the past several weeks, and we continue to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, question. I've got neighbors asking about the road repair. When is that budgeted for?
What, how's the... Street, street repair, would that be, sir?
Streets, town streets, neighborhood streets.
I've met with Kelly to go over budget, and she's going to get back to me on, there's going to be additional funds in the budget, and let me know how much money we have to do streets. So, as soon as we, so as we know something from Kelly, we can, we can do a little planning ahead. We've got a list together, so...
Okay, I'm not trying to beat you up or anything.
No.
I just got a lady's been in Maryville for 40 years, third home in my report, and she wants her street done, and she ain't playing it, okay?
I agree. No, I completely agree with you.
All right.
Once Kelly lets me know if we have, you know, what funds we have, then we...
I'd hate to get beat up by her, no. I can't hit her, she's too old. I got to take it, whatever she does.
Vice President White, to go to your question and to elaborate a little bit more on what Pettit was saying and Steve was saying, we've been having meetings with the department heads about the budget, and then we are trying to find money, surplus money, money that's not used, money that can be moved, and so, to that end, and money that we can get earned not just from taxes, but from our fees and some changes that we need to make. So, that's the process that I've been engaged with first, in trying to see whether we can raise some more revenue in the town and move some monies around. I talked to Steve, so we, I did identify some money that maybe could be used. We just need to see what's not being used for matching funds. And so, what we're trying to prioritize, and then Steve and I are going to meet again, because what we're going to do is try to get him a more established road budget that he knows he can have, and then see where we can pull some excess. So, that's what I've been waiting on. I've been trying to do kind of a comprehensive process before finally submitting the whole budget. Okay?
Okay, thank you. All right, no more questions on the budget and finance.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
Nothing new this time. We'll be sitting down again in the fall to go over some matters at that time.
Council Affairs, Mrs. Yuzelak.
No, we haven't had a meeting yet, nothing at this time.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, again, Mrs. Yuzelak.
Yes, after we review the 2020 budget, then I will have a Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits meeting.
Very good. Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. This Friday will be the last day we'll accept the letters of intent for anybody who's interested in the new positions for the Police Commission. They'll be turned into the Town Manager's Office after Friday. We will take those applications, turn them over to Ms. Yuzelak for her committee to proceed at that time. Other than that, we met yesterday with the Fire Department to go over some things there. Once I get details ironed out, I'll send out a proposal to the rest of the council with details in it.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzelak.
Yes, Crescent Lake Park is being worked on now with new equipment. The stone is being laid, and they are taking measurements to put in the concrete floor with the vinyl flooring. I think it's vinyl. Jan, would you speak up on this, please?
It's rubberized surfacing.
Please use the microphone, Jan.
Right.
The one that Steve's holding.
Thank you, Steve.
I probably never put it down, did I?
We're in the process of installing Crescent Lake Park. It's off of Morton Street and Marge Yuzelak's ward. The playground equipment, first of all, we've created our X and Y's where the equipment should go. The installation of the equipment will take us approximately three weeks. After that time, and the concrete is cured, then the rubberized surfacing will be installed. The rubberized surfacing will have to be guarded for 24 hours. No one can walk on that until it cures, and then we will be good to go in opening the playground. It looks like at this time, we probably would open it and be completed with it sometime mid-September.
Thank you, Jan. That would complete our parks, our parks work in the fourth... That would complete our parks, our parks work in the fourth ward, which Jan has done a good job. I have to thank you and our parks have really been improved with all the new equipment. Also, the town of Maryville has been given two lots, donated two lots in the Bridgeview subdivision. We would like to make a green space out of it with a couple of benches and trees. It is being donated to the town of Maryville in the Bridgeview subdivision. So I would go ahead and make motion to that effect that we accept their donation and proceed with doing a green space there.
Second. Motion, Mrs. Uselek, second, Mr. Pettit, for approval to accept the donation of two lots in Bridgeview subdivision. And I believe, Mrs. Uselek, it's a, uh, for design work to be completed later, at a later date, right?
Yes, the design work will be completed at a later date.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
We'll get with Jan and Mr. Svetnov to do the legalities of that and take care of the paperwork.
We'll be on the trans.
Very good. Any questions or comments on the motion? Thank you. This will be the first open space or park area in the fifth district.
Mm-hmm.
Because when the redistricting happened...
Right.
Ward five lost all of its parks.
Those, these were donated by the real estate company Watson. Uh, they are based in Tampa and Jacksonville, Florida. So we appreciate their donation.
Very good. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Uselek.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Mr. Minchuck, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot, under Public Safety, I forgot to get the, for Mr. Chief Coutinho if he had anything for today.
I'm sorry, with that, again, Councilman.
If you have anything, sir, now's your time.
Uh, just we finalized, uh, just finished finalizing the, uh, four-year lease agreement for our north station and it's going to be for four years. It was coming in, uh, the space. We also speaking with the, uh, trade unions to, uh, add a little TLC to it and hopefully it should be up and running by September.
Good job, good work.
Very good.
Oh, okay. Environmental Affairs tonight, Mr. White.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I've talked to Jan. Um, we talked about the CL 360, you know, that's the apple of my eye because I just think it's a really effective way to, um, to knock down the COVID virus. And the, and the reason I'm saying that, Rick, is because I watched your chair for the last four meetings and you were only in the chair one time. So I'm saying, basically, there's people sharing that chair and I've known they've been around individuals that may have came in contact with COVID people. Now, from what I do understand, I talked to Pat, was that these guys clean up after that. I, I, I'm not certain, but I think if that's something we're going to do, I think we need some documentation as to saying this area was cleaned and, and disanitized. Right now, I'm telling you, seeing people in that chair, that chair. So the courts share it, the DZA share it, the RDC share it, and the town council shares. A lot of sharing. Uh, so I just want to make sure we're all safe and I believe that, uh, with the 360 for certain, got to make it better. Additionally, uh, Jan looked up, had some of her people looked up the 360 and that $6,000 was way over what we're talking about. Jan, do you want to add something to that?
Um, we found a Clorox 360, um, for $39.99, so a couple thousand dollars cheaper. The Clorox 360, you do have to, uh, buy the disinfectant and it will, uh, disinfect 18,000 square foot in one hour's time.
And, and they said it was a backlog on the ordering and it would take how long?
Uh, 12 to 14 weeks.
And, and the reason I'm concerned about it, because we don't know, Mr. COVID. Um, this thing seems to do whatever it wants to do whenever it gets ready. So I, I'm just trying to say to make all of us safe, make myself safe as well, I just think that's something we should move on. Uh, I think additionally for some testing, um, additional testing. And I do know there's other end areas that they say you can go get tested, but I'm not pleased with that yet because we don't know the real numbers. Even though we had some dock, some numbers from last time, we don't know specifically. I went over that with Matt. Matt helped me out a lot with, uh, trying to put that, crunch those numbers down and try to put them in, in context. And, uh, some of the things we've seen, you won't be able to know exactly why, say for instance, where Rick Bella lives at because of the HIPAA laws. But what it does allow us to do, it allows us to look under the zip codes and that's what we've seen. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, there's certain restrictions with the data and it, you only get to the zip code level. Um, they can't tell you the address of who's infected because of the HIPAA laws. So, um, so from that, that standpoint, that's about as detailed as you can get with regards to the data that the state releases.
Okay. Mr. Reardon, does our cleaning service use a steam type similar cleaning method for town hall?
They have one and they did use one following our previous council meeting.
Okay.
It's, it's a unique, very labor-intensive and thus costly service, but they do have one and we have used it. But day-to-day, every day, no, they don't, they don't use that.
You said they have a three, uh, system that's...
It's, it's, I, I'm assuming, Councilman, that it's...
Pardon me.
It's similar, but it's not the Clorox 360 system. I can have a, if the council wishes, I can have a conversation with them about, um, stepping up that process, but also explore the 360, um, whatever the council wishes.
Yeah, because, uh, in talking to Jan, she really thought that that would be really sufficient for the large area of the community center, um, to be more, you know, in the terms of desanitizing would be more effective from that.
Could actually use it throughout the entire town in your, in your police cars, your fire trucks, town hall. I mean, of course, it's portable, so everybody in town could take advantage of it in their offices and their vehicles.
This is $4,000, Mr. President.
Is there a motion somewhere?
Well, I'm, I'm getting to that if...
We've talked about this a few times.
Is it reimbursable?
It would be, absolutely.
Motion that we buy the Clorox 360 for $39.95 and be done with it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I think it was $39.99.
$39.95, I'm sorry. $3,000 out of your park budget.
Actually, it's just four cents, but we have typos tonight and everything, so what's, what's math?
Thank you for agreeing to that. I think...
Haven't voted yet.
We sure do. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye to purchase...
Aye.
Aye? Mr. White, did you want to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Uh, one more item on the environmental. I, I actually, I meant to talk to, uh, Matt. I got a call from a lady over in, um, 59th Court, uh, in Berkeley Village. It's a, I want to say it's a pond, but it has piers out there and it's really grassy over there and they are afraid that kids will walk on the edge of that grass because it hasn't been cut. I don't know who maintains the pond. I don't even know if the pond belongs to Maryville. Uh, but, but in any case, not only if a kid walk, only if adult walking there, they, they're down, at least down there in big, but I don't know about falling directly in the water, but I want to know if we can address that.
Yeah, yeah, the, the pond there is Outlet A. Um, it's owned by Elizabeth Palma, according to the Lake County records now, but it could be on tax sale. I'm not sure if it's in, uh, someone picked it up on tax sale at this point in time because there are, um, let's see what the taxes are on that. About $5,000. So they haven't, yeah, $5,740.29 due in spring and I doubt if someone's paying that for this parcel. But as you had mentioned, um, people have piers out there, so they put piers and things on someone else's property, huge liability, um, but it is not owned by the town. So, um, the owner should be responsible for not only the liability aspect, but the maintenance aspect as well. But, um, I have a feeling it might be on tax sale, so, because of the...
So how, how would we address the, the weedy area that even though it doesn't put us at liability, still a safety, huh, issue for, um, for individuals?
I guess we'd have to determine what, what the safety issue is in terms of the vegetation. The piers, and it's an obvious safety issue if there's someone that's constructed there. Um, so they built it without a building permit. That could be a planning and building matter. Uh, so if you're constructing something on someone else's property, whether it be, you know, a shed, a pier, whatever it is, um, it's, it's an aspect of trespassing and also, you know, liabilities, but they should have had some kind of a building permit or something to rectify structure, um, any property like that. So, uh, so I'd probably defer that to planning and building.
Okay, thank you, Matt. No more questions from the Environment Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. White. You'll follow up then on that and get back to the council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to Elections, Public Relations and Census 2020, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, the only thing I have really, uh, Mr. President, is under Public Relations and, um, as everyone knows, uh, Rick's position as Council President, he issued a modified executive order making masks mandatory, then the governor followed, uh, everyone else. And Pat and Rick have had these, uh, posters made up. Uh, Rick and Pat have got a stack of them, uh, so everybody take some, uh, get them to the businesses so everyone knows, uh, that masks are required in the town of Maryville. It's got the exceptions, uh, as to when you really don't need to wear a mask and, and all that stuff. So to, to Rick and Pat, thank you for those. Um, we probably need to get those, Pat, maybe, uh, a stack to the chamber as well, um, and anyone else we can think of.
That's good.
Uh, start passing those things out and see if we can't, uh, slow this thing down.
Mr. Pettit, if I may, under a census report, the, as of, uh, July 20th, Maryville's ranked 12th out of 19 communities in Lake County with only a 68.4% response rate. As everybody knows, we had up banners, we had up 500 or 1,000 signs all over town. We've really been pushing it, um, to get participation this year because it is so important. I mean, the figures used bring back money to the community, both federal and state money, and to turn up 12th below Griffith, Cedar Lake, Hobart, Winfield, Highland, Lowell, Sherrville, Crown Point, Monster, Dyer and St. John. Um, I was a little disappointed, to be honest. I think we can do a little better. There's still time. Uh, the communication, communities below us is New Chicago, Lake Station, Hammond, Snyder, Whiting, Gary and East Chicago. Um, Gary and East Chicago are at 45% and 42%. So, um, we still have time to encourage people to fill out the census. It is very important to do, so please tell your friends, tell your neighbors, check with your family members, make sure that they've done this because it is vitally important and it affects us for the next 10 years. Anything else under your committee, Mr. Pettit? Economic Development, Mr. Pettit?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. President, as you know, the RFP on the old Field House building that the town now owns, uh, in Ameriplex, the deadline is this Friday at 4:30 in Pat's office for prospective buyers. Um, in talking with Pat, we don't know what's going to transpire this week. Um, with that being said, I would like to extend, if, if we receive no, in the event we receive no proposals by Friday at 4:30, I want to extend that deadline to August 31st at 4:30.
Is that a motion, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, it is.
Second. Motion to extend the deadline to August 31st at 4:30 PM if we don't get any bids in on the Field House property, um, that we're trying to sell currently. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Utility Liaison, Mr. Span.
No report.
Okay. Abandoned Properties, Mr. White.
Yeah, I think that when we start looking at abandoned properties, we also need to look at home. Uh, in my area, at the Old Town Garage, that garage really looks terrible. I got a chance to drive around there today. I mean, actually yesterday, and it looked like it should be demolished or repaired, but it looks bad. The roof is open on it and then when you drive past there, the whole building is just kind of shabby, for better lack of words. So I don't know, maybe, um, I don't know what the next step is to take that, but if we're going to tell the other parts of the community that you got to keep up on your things, then I think we need to step our game up just a little bit on that one.
Do, do we put any signage in front of something like that saying condemned or danger?
Not that I know of, but something to look at, sure.
Are the children in the area? No one, no kids?
The North Barn, Sean.
Oh, the North Barn.
The wood part. It's really bad. So...
So I don't want to have to send Stephanie and, uh, Vicki over there.
Just getting the hold of Vicki, head over, investigated, write up some ordinance violations to the owner, but also maybe putting it through lighter than abandoned buildings to start implementing good action.
Joe, the owner is the town of Maryville.
Well, yeah, I was going to say.
Taking action, because I said...
We're bringing this up, we ought to just send, you know, Steve...
Let's get quotes on tearing it down.
Kevin, go up to the North Barn and investigate what needs to be done and get a, a report back to the council. Awesome. Let's make it easy.
And we part, part back with a plan, what needs to be done.
I'd hate to send a certified letter to Pat Reardon and tell him he's in violation. He gets enough mail.
Take his coffee mug.
I welcome it.
Sorry, Joe, I didn't know if you realized that was our building.
Trust me, I would have gone through the...
I was just like cracking up, like...
Just officially...
I thought he was being friendly.
It's the town of Maryville, North Barn. Okay. Thank you for bringing up, uh, Mr. White. We'll...
Welcome. Illegal dumping. I have an issue with illegal dumping. Got an old Joe Tittle's building in the back, the rear, there's tires out there. I see, uh, yard waste, uh, and construction waste somebody dumped back there, so, um, did that yesterday as well, too. So you could tell my life is really, really exciting if I'm riding around looking for illegal dumping. But in, in any case, I think that's something we need to address. Uh, it looks bad back there. Um, I don't know, I think we should also call Mr. Anderson. Is that her, the attorney for that area, Marge?
Which building is it?
What building are you talking about?
On 61st and Broadway.
The Shopping Plaza.
Oh. I don't know who the attorney is. Mr. Anderson is...
That's David industrial property. That would be, that would be attorney, Richard Anderson.
Richard Anderson, yeah. He was the one that came with the...
Representative in front of the DZA and Mike.
Yeah, he was going to build the 270,000 square foot industrial building out there, remember, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So how long are we going to let him hold on supposedly to, uh, build that building? Or do we try to move on to something else because it's just sitting there? Everything's starting to crunch down there. So now we got the old Joe Tittle's building bad, illegal dumping bad, and then we got several storefronts that are closed. So, that's it for me.
Well, in the meantime, let's have Mr. Svetnov send a letter to the owner and just get the trash picked up and cleaned up.
What I, what I'd like to do first, Mr. President, is go ahead and call Mr. Anderson.
That's fine.
Invite him, what's going on, ask him if you have problems playing, do the proper cleanup.
Yeah, okay. Usually, usually he's here, but not tonight.
Right.
And Leonard, you're dating yourself with Joe Tittle and Sons?
Right.
Really? You're going that far back?
I think, I think Kelly already dated me earlier, uh, in my age range here.
They didn't know that.
In my age, my age range, that's why. She thought it was a little C now.
Moving on to Town Identity and Beautification, Mrs. Uselek.
Uh, yes. Getting back to Leonard White, he was out there looking for the hose to water the plants. We had checked them out two times last week, I believe. Did you find the hose, Leonard?
Uh, I found the hose, I just couldn't find the spout. And I know it's back there somewhere, but I, I wasn't able to find it.
Well, Leonard is in charge of the plants, so he would like to keep them watered.
Sure, yes.
So maybe somebody could show him where the spout is.
Additionally, uh, what, what about the, in the alleys that, do they need to be watered Additionally, what about the, and the islands, do they need to be watered as well as you?
Well, the janitor.
I'm just saying, I mean, islands need water.
You talking about Alfronta?
Yes.
The janitor normally takes care of that.
Usually Public Works does, right, Steve? Yeah. Public Works takes care of that when they cut the grass and does all that.
Well, Leonard is on the committee of this beautification.
Well, that's great.
He's taking a great interest in that.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a good idea if he does keep them watered, maybe you should check it every day, Leonard.
Leonard, he drinks Pepsi. It's a Pepsi deal.
Additionally, I think I talked to Marge, and I think I talked to Pat. Our building on the north, the south side of this building, the paint is peeling off of it on that side, so I don't know.
We did discuss that, and you were trying to find out if we could get someone to repair that.
Yes.
Which that would have to probably come through Public Works or, I don't know, at this point.
I don't know either, but I know you said, we talked about it.
We talked about it, right.
Well, on issues like that, what I would suggest, I mean, we have Pat Reardon, and when I see stuff like that, I just let Pat know, and Pat will know to which department had to go to, to expedite a repair or get quotes or et cetera, so that we don't have to discuss it here. It's really more of a committee thing. But yeah, just feel free to let Pat know, that's what I've been doing, and it's been working out really good, so. Does that make sense, council?
Sure, very good.
Okay.
Nothing else for Leonard, thank you.
Thank you. Community and Recreation Center, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Pettit?
Mr. President, before I do that, under Leonard's committee, I just wanted to, I was stopped by a constituent in the hall, our faithful cameraman. The Carriage House is going to begin demolition on August 3rd. They're going to mobilize, and they're going to be tearing it down for approximately two weeks, according to Ryan Construction. They'll backfeed and grade the black dirt. They should be out of there by Labor Day. So that corner, Jeff, we kind of have both those corners, you and I, those four corners, that work will start, and that house will be demolished. Under the Community and Recreation Center, John Kennedy's here, Andrew Farmer's here from Core, we have a redevelopment commission after this. The committee met, Jeff and Leonard and I, Jan and John and Andrew, went through several things that we're going to be approving at the redevelopment commission meeting, including the fitness equipment, the field cost, the Recreation Center signed, the bids came in, and we're going to be awarding that, the kitchen equipment, sports field equipment. Jan and Joe continue to work with Maryville Pop Warner on a letter of intent, along with Maryville Soccer on a letter of intent. We're getting into design. John's firm is in the process of designing the concession stand and storage building. We're working through contract amounts on what will we charge Pop Warner to use the field every Sunday in the fall, along with Maryville Soccer. We started discussing some of the furniture and fixtures for Jan and the community center. We discussed the access point in Mr. Minchuck's Ward, Ward 3, going back to Turkey Creek and getting an idea of where we're at with that. We also did the computer equipment and service contract, and Jan, I apologize, I cannot remember the vendor, Bacoson?
Bacoson Richards.
Bacoson Richards. So I think, Mr. President and council members, that this is the last physical side of the community center that we need to do. I think what Jeff and Leonard and I talked about is coming up here in August is we're going to be getting back with Kelly and with Joe and going through the legal forms that Jan will use to rent the facility, the programs and all that, and we'll get into the actual operating budget. I will be quite honest with all six of you, I have a ceiling and a dollar amount in my head that I'm going to share with the committee when that time's appropriate, is what I think we need to limit the first couple of years of operating at. Some of them, I may have spoken to you folks before, so that's about it. Jeff or Leonard, I don't know, did I miss anything? Or Jan?
Covered it all.
Correct. And then again, we'll have a RDC right after this.
Mr. Minchuck, anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Department Directors' Report, please use the microphone if you have a report. Department Directors, anything? Matt? Okay. Very good. Moving on to some business tonight, we have the, no ordinances tonight, we do have a resolution, Resolution 20-22. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies from the 2020 budget within the local road and streets budget. It's going from the stop and streetlights to other equipment. The amount is $360, the net effect is zero.
The vote, second.
Motion from Mr. Pettit, second of Mr. Minchuck, for approval of Resolution 20-22. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk Treasure, any comments?
No, this housekeeping, just need to move it.
Please do a roll call then, please.
Okay. Councilman Spann?
Aye.
All right, Councilman Hardaway?
Yep.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Vice President White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, the motion carries. Moving on to Resolution 20-23. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the repayment of temporary loans within our own town budget. These are internal funds. The amount of reduction is $1,148,361.67. The increase is the same amount, the net effect is zero. Anything to add, Madam Clerk Treasure?
Just that this year, we decided not to, normally we take the loan and carry it for six months before the general fund gets the money back, and we wait until the funds come in later on in the fall, but this year we decided, once we got all the money up in our funds, to just go on and take it and put it back in general fund because the general fund needs it. So we're not, basically, we're kind of counseling the loan. So that's, that's really what we're doing.
Most pleasure of the council, thank you.
We paid off the debt service.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of Resolution 20-23 as presented. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call.
Councilman Spann?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yep.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Vice President White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven, zero, that motion carries. Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeal Actions, we do have one petitioner tonight, Alfred Martin, special exception approval to allow a health and fitness center. We have a typo on the agenda, it's our night for typos, I guess. The address is 5382 Broadway. The zoning is C2 and a community commercial zoning district. Mr. King, did you have a report for us?
Yes, I have a staff report from Sheila that she asked me to read. Petitioners requesting special exception approval from Section 21-136 to allow a health and fitness center, no days off camp, to be located at 5382 Broadway in a C2 community commercial zoning district. Urban Suns Community Development is a nonprofit organization. It's currently located at 5401 Broadway. Broadway, where meetings, programs, and supervised visitation take place. Urban Suns is in the process of expanding its services to include our no days off for training, health, and fitness. Urban Suns is currently contracted with the Department of Child Services, where home based and community services are provided for adults, children, and families for the reunification process as well as independent living. Urban Suns No Days Off program is currently working with adults and children to assist them with health and fitness using an off premises location. They would like to operate this program at 5382 Broadway. The program currently employs former participants, which shows the effectiveness of the program. Urban Suns organizational chart consists of Executive Director, Director of Services, Tutors, Case Managers, and Sports Trainers. All Urban Suns staff members have Bachelors and Masters level degrees in Human Services and well, as well as Licensed Clinical Consultants. Urban Suns has 10 employees, which include the Executive Director and Director of Services. Hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM at 5401 Broadway presently, and 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the 5382 Broadway proposed site. Petitioner is aware of the security camera ordinance. Parking is adequate for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. On May 27, 2020, petitioner was deferred and requested by the Board of Zoning Appeals to provide a detailed floor plan for the proposed health and fitness center, but the petitioner will resubmit updated floor plans.
Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here tonight?
I'm the Director of Services for Urban Suns.
Would you mind coming forward and state your name for the record, in case we have any questions? I think this is 3,125 square feet, this particular storefront?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
My name is Virgil Ryan, I'm the Director of Services at Urban Suns Community Development.
Very good. Any questions for this petitioner?
Rich, is this your ward?
Nice mask.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway for approval of this petitioner, with a second by Mr. Minchuck, for this special exception approval to allow a health and fitness center at 5382 Broadway. Any questions or comments on the motion? I'm for once happy to see someone going in that plaza there, is my support. Anything else? Any other questions? Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Councilman Spann?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yep.
Sorry. Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Vice President White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Seven votes in total.
Seven, two, the motion carries. Congratulations, you're welcome. Any old business before us tonight?
Mr. President, I was remiss in my community center report, and I would like to ask the council's indulgence, John and Andrew are in the audience, and a lot of us have been out to the center, walking around out there. What I would like to do is get the entire group out there and hold our August 25th Town Council meeting in the community center. John and Andrew, can you make the accommodations with Pat for tables and chairs? And we will, if that pleases the council, I'd like everybody to get a one-on-one view of this, walking around.
Will that be a casual dress day, sir?
Uh, no, suit and tie for the men. And Jim Jones will give us all hard hats. We don't need a hard hat after hours, do we, Steve?
Well, we're still on camera. Don't let hope out of here. Motion was just there.
Any other old business before us? Moving on to new business, new business tonight, council? Hearing none, public comment? Is there any public comment this evening? Pastor? Please state your name and address for the records.
Yeah, my name is Mark Alrick, I'm the pastor of Reaping Church. So I reside and live, or have my church in Tany Place area, so my address is 7549 Tany Place, my church's address is 2920 West 73rd Place. This has happened probably four or five times, there's been incidences both at our house and at the church where I've had to call the police, and it takes like five minutes to get to Maryville Police Department. And I just wanted to know, why does it take so long to get through, to have some, like clarification if I'm calling?
I can explain that.
You mean to get the phone answered, or what?
Yeah, so like, well, it goes through county dispatch, and then you're jumping through the hoops.
I can explain that if you want.
Mr. Minchuck, please do.
The state passed this mandate, how many, about five, six, seven years ago, maybe even more now, that all counties are going to go to one municipal dispatch center.
Okay.
In our area, in my opinion, that is not beneficial here. But we have to do it. It goes through to a call taker, the call taker has a list of questions they have to ask you no matter what. Once that call taker's done with you and that questioner, no matter how extreme your emergency is, then it goes to the person that has to dispatch the police. As you can see, all this, all this takes time, all this takes time. So it's, in my opinion, I don't like it, it doesn't benefit you, it doesn't benefit the police, it doesn't benefit anybody.
Yeah.
But it's what we have to deal with, so. I don't know what to tell you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the issues, and I don't know if the police department could help, is down Tany Place is 20 miles an hour, and you have people driving 45, 50 miles an hour down there, passing each other on a double yellow line, right near Salt Elementary. And our church property, we have people driving through the actual property, coming very close to hitting the sign, and that's one of the reasons we called, so just wanted to bring that up.
Now, the speeders, we could certainly help with.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah. Do you have a time so that officer can kind of?
It happens at all times of the day.
All times? Morning, though, more morning than evening?
I would just say that whenever, whenever somebody's in a hurry to get through our neighborhood.
Okay.
Chief, can you help him? That's happening throughout the town, and that's why we're trying to increase our officers. That way we can come up with a traffic division and have officers that will focus on those particular issues. But unfortunately, that's happened, and we're going to try to concentrate on it, try to do what we can, but that's happening throughout the town. Hopefully, we can rectify that problem in due time.
Are they posted speed signs out there?
Oh, all the way through, yeah. So that's all I have.
Jim Donahue, did you have anything else to add to the radio room discussion? I know you were part of all that. No? So you got your ward, you're just done now with the town? Why are you still here? I'm joking, that was a joke. Okay. Yeah, I personally think the 911 center, the centralized center, was the worst thing for our town.
Yes.
I'd loved having a radio room right here.
Yes.
And every radio operator throughout the town, and Jim, a tribute to you, too. Everyone knew every inch of Maryville. The radio operators knew what they were talking about, they sent the right policeman at the right time to the right place, and if the patrolman got lost or needed assistance, that radio operator knew where to tell them to go.
So they're doing Jim Snyder, White?
Yeah, I mean.
He was more direct, I mean, right now it's not very direct at all, and I can kind of see why the state did it. You get in your rural areas where they have smaller police departments, they can't afford to have, that's fine, but, you know, we have, what, 17, 18 departments in this county? It's just not feasible at all whatsoever.
It's not.
Is it something we can revisit, Mr. Spenoff, with the state?
It's a battle with the state.
State mandated program, trying to go in line with the community, I think, and right now we're trying to hamstrung it, so it takes action to do what they've done.
Now, recently.
Right.
I would say that this legislation was implemented before.
Yes, it was.
But, Joe, didn't Sherrville and someone else opt out?
Cedar Lake.
Cedar Lake?
Yeah, in the statute itself, it explains that you can have no more than two centers within the county, so that's how they broke off.
That's why they, okay.
And Councilman Pettit, they always spent probably a half a million dollars to promote fighting.
Oh, okay.
Trying to stay out of it.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none on motion or announcements, Town Council Meeting, August 11th, 6:30 here at this building. The August 25th council meeting will be at the new community center. More details to come on that. All this, except the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Pettit and Mrs. Yuzlak, all in favor, signify by saying aye?